No.
All right. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and open this meeting of the Planning Commission. Call to order, and the roll call, please.
Thank you. Chair Wilson.
Present.
Co-Chair Kerth.
Here.
Commissioner Huber. Commissioner Porter. Commissioner Do.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna have the invocation led by Commissioner Kerth, and I will be doing the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Please bow your head as we pray. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to meet tonight. Please bless this meeting so that decisions that are made are in the best interest of this city.
All right, our first order of business is to approve the minutes from the meeting of February 11th, 2015.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Well, I guess I'll wait for you to call for corrections.
Oh, go ahead if you've got a question this way.
I'd like to make a correction regarding the commentary I made at the last meeting. That I'm, uh, will follow the direction of the staff, and that's not accurate. Thank you, Chris. Uh, that's not accurate, so I, I wrote it out, and what I indicated was that as making executive decision, it's important that I, uh, consider their expertise as when making recommendations, not necessary directions. I wrote it out.
Perfect, okay.
Okay, thank you.
If that's not, she can make that correction. Any other corrections?
Yeah, so we'll just bring those minutes to you at the next meeting corrected, uh, that way Lionel can make sure.
Perfect, okay. Then we'll go ahead and we will move on to Agenda Item Number One. We just do the approval with corrections, or we want to bring them back?
I would rather bring them back. It, it looked like a little bit extensive.
Okay. Not a problem. All right, so then we'll go ahead and move to Agenda Item Number One.
Yes, Agenda Item Number One is a public hearing. It's PLN 15-3. It's a conditional use permit to allow for live entertainment in conjunction with a restaurant at 145627th Street. Stacy Windler is the applicant. If you recall, this is the, uh, the restaurant slash bar that we thought, well, we were gonna have issues with back in October, September, October, and staff had denied it, recommended in denial of it, denied it. It came to the commission on appeal, and the commission was okay with conditioning the project or the, the business. One of those conditions was no live enter, no, no live entertainment unless, uh, you returned to get a conditional use permit for it. Uh, staff didn't support her requesting that for at least six months, which is similar to what we do for hookah lounges, and therefore, it's been six months. There have been no reports, no incidents, and no negative incidents at the location, so therefore, this is before you, for your approval. We've conditioned it for your approval. Modified a couple of the conditions to make it so that the advert, she doesn't advertise for live entertainment. We don't want people going there to see a band. We want people going there for the restaurant and then enjoying a band while they're eating.
All right. Well, I will go ahead and open up the public comment. Um, I do have a card for Stacy Jain? Hyen.
I've been married, so I'm not, I'm Windler Hyen now. But, um, this is my first time public speaking, so I'm very, very, very nervous. So, um, okay, so yes, we have been open, am I really loud? Okay, so we have been open for six months now. Um, we run completely just as a restaurant. In fact, so much so that, um, I think we have a great menu. Um, people have been coming in. I don't know if any of you guys have actually been in, but we get so many people in saying that they love our steaks, our food, our burgers, like, we've just gotten so many compliments, and people saying that they really needed this in the neighborhood. Um, so much so, we were very excited yesterday that actually we were in the Daily Press. I don't know if anyone actually got to see this, but we actually had one of the guys, um, his name is Marshall Harpo, and, um, he just, he came in and without us even knowing, and he tried our restaurant, and he actually wrote one of the best reviews I've ever heard, and it was awesome. So I actually made copies, if you guys want to actually see that, and he, it's actually from a point of view of, you know, someone established in the community that can give a, you know, what actually our restaurant's all about. Um, another thing is, as far as like the live entertainment, we're not requiring, like, you know, to do live entertainment and do dancing. We have no dance floor whatsoever. The type of entertainment that we're doing, it's not gonna be a dance club. It's not gonna be any rap music. It's not gonna be DJs. It's gonna be country bands and rock and roll, and it's gonna be you and sitting enjoying your dinner while you're, um, having entertainment. There'll be no dancing whatsoever. Um, and as far as that, like, the conditions that he put on, um, us, I've read them, and it's kind of more like where he's like put in, you know, obviously, like he said, um, no advertising of the live entertainment. We're totally okay with everything that they've said. Um, we don't even mind putting, you know, like a one-year renewal on it, where like, say for instance, in one year, like, we come back and, you know, we just prove yourself, like, we did for these six months, just prove ourselves that, like, you know, we, we don't have a bad intent or any, um, negative intent on the community whatsoever. In fact, if anything, we're just trying to improve it. Um, and, um...
Doing good.
Other than that, is there any questions? And then, do you guys wanna pass this out so anyone can, like, see it, or if, or is it, okay?
Are there any questions for Stacy?
Chairman, I, I have a question. Um, you've read over all the conditions which the staff made recommendations.
Correct.
And, um, you have a surveillance camera?
We do. We actually have about, um, ten, and, um, we did have some on the front and the back. We have them all over our cash registers, all over the floors. They're monitored for actually, um, we asked for seven days. Our, um, we ended up buying a system that actually does it for at least thirty days. We've actually had to only use it maybe a couple times when someone's, like, lost their purse or an ID or something, and then we've been able to actually go back and track on that. But as, like, as they've said, there's not been one instance where actually a police officer's actually had to come into our establishment. Nothing's ever happened whatsoever for us to actually have the need to even go back. But we have four in an instance. Um, someone did lose her wallet and ID, and then we told her, we said, "Oh, you stuck it in your red bag all the way at the bottom." It looked like you put it really, she goes, "I know, I found it in, in my, um, my driveway." When she was getting out of her car, she dropped it. So, um, we actually have a really good security system.
Okay, I'm not looking at, uh, so much what the owner or what the owner is doing. I'm more concerned about the atmosphere in which, um, participants, when they come to your location.
Oh, we have...
Are they behaving?
Oh, my gosh, a hundred percent. We actually have, and it was the funniest thing too, because when I first came in, I kind of had that negative, like, "Oh, my gosh, what am I getting myself into?" I'm, I live in Marina Del Rey. I've always, um, had places down the hill. I've heard so many bad things. A lot of people were even giving me negative, "What are you gonna do up there?" When I came in, I remember, like, my first week, I was like, "Oh, my God, there's like the nicest people up here," and like, honestly, like, I've actually grown to like like and love, um, my clientele, and, um, the customers who come in, I have, you know, a, a lot of regulars, and they always say, you know, "We love coming in here because the, it's not so dim and dark, and we can hear, you know, we like to talk, and, you know, it's a very, um, easy atmosphere," as opposed to, um, some of the other places that they were mentioning.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to Item Number One? You know, I'm gonna go ahead and close it and bring it back to the commission. Question?
Chairman, I'll go ahead and, um, make a motion. Find the project categorically exempt under Section 15301 of the state guidelines to implement, uh, SEQA, and for the conditional use permit, um, approve Resolution P-15-005, um, along with, uh, all the conditions.
For approval?
For approval, along with the, uh, attached conditions in the staff report.
Have a second? Are we doing a manual?
Yes, we have a first by Commissioner Kerth, Co-Chair Kerth, a second by Commissioner Porter, and we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have a unanimous approval for this project.
Congratulations. All right, go ahead, and I will, uh, move on to Agenda Item Number Two. Okay.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Agenda Item Number Two is a conditional use permit with an environmental exemption to allow for the re-establishment and alteration of a non-conforming office use within an R3 residential district. Uh, this proposal includes a new medical office, revised hours of operation, and a parking and site redesign. A little history on the site. It was originally converted to a commercial use approximately in 1981 for use of the daycare office, or a daycare facility. Uh, most recently in 2001, it was used as a counseling office. It was approved via CUP by the Planning Commission. At that time, uh, municipal code allowed conditional use permits, um, to process conditional uses, uh, I'm sorry. At that time, the municipal code allowed the Planning Commission to approve a conditional use permit to allow a commercial use in a residential zone. Since that time, that allowance has been removed for, from code. However, the site itself is improved with paved parking, landscaping. Um, additionally, it's, it's a, before its use as a commercial use, it was a single-family residential home, it appears to be, so it, even if it was reverted back to residential use, um, it would not meet the current R3 high-density multifamily standards, um, so it is a true non-conforming use. Because of that, it requires a conditional use permit to allow for the re-establishment of the non-conforming use as an office, as well as the alteration to allow for the modified office use from a counseling office to medical office, um, as well as, uh, new hours of operation. The business itself is a, is a family practice medical office. Uh, client, uh, clients are seen by appointment only. There's no walk-in or urgent care. Uh, operates, uh, basically from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. There are limited hours on Fridays till 4:00 PM, no weekend hours whatsoever. There is a parking deficiency, deficiency on site of two spaces. Uh, previously, the site did conform to parking standard. It had thirteen spaces. However, those spaces did not meet minimum depth requirements. There was not, um, minimum access requirements met, so how it really operated on a day-to-day basis probably was with less than thirteen spaces, 'cause, uh, staff found that there was no way that there could fit that many cars really on site with the way the, the site was designed. So with this proposal, the spaces will come back into conformance in terms of size, access. It will be deficient two spaces, however, because of the hours of operation, um, during the day, no weekends, and the limited client base. Staff finds that the existing parking as proposed will be sufficient to serve the site. Additionally, if there are any issues in the future, there are appropriate conditions that would allow, uh, the zoning administrator to require additional parking spaces in the rear of the site to bring it into full conformance with code, if, if it does become an issue with parking or conformance with that. In addition to those parking improvements, uh, a block wall is being proposed, uh, where an existing wood fence is, which would benefit the site and the, and the local community. Uh, trash enclosures will be updated, and then there'll be general maintenance in terms of landscaping, painting, things like that. Uh, that being said, as conditions, staff supports the proposal, and I'm here to answer any questions, should you have any.
Thank you for your report. Um, the petitioner is in agreement with all the conditions in which you've indicated?
Yes, the applicant's representative has indicated they're, they're in agreement with all the conditions approved.
In out of cur, uh, curiosity, how often is it that, uh, there's a transition from R2 to commercial, commercial or business? How often does something like that occur?
Um, fairly often, in, in terms of the conditional use, and especially situations like this. Because our code did allow situations where commercial could be allowed by the commission in limited circumstances in a residential zone, um, it's not an uncommon request to have this, and if the code was, was still an allowance of commercial use as a residential, I would assume staff would probably take a similar stance on the support of the item.
Especially where you have the intersection of two streets like this.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone that wishes, all of them in the public hearing, is there anyone that wishes to speak to Item Number Two? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and bring that back to the commission. Any questions? And I'll go ahead and second that. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So that has been approved with a first motion by Commissioner Porter, a second by Co-Chair Kerth, Wilson, with Chair Wilson, and, uh, Commissioner Huber recused.
Uh, Chairman Wilson, on this next item, I, uh, recuse myself on this item in the past, so I would request to do so again this time.
All right, Item Number Three is a continued, a continuance request for a site plan to allow for the construction of a two fast-food restaurants in a multi-tenant retail building with an environmental exemption for Coty Foods. Need to go ahead and recognize that if anyone wishes to speak to this item? Item Number Three.
Hi, I'm, I'm Dan Osrin with Coty Foods. Thank you, um, for, you know, helping us with the project. I was only gonna, gonna speak if there was opposition tonight, which... There's not be.
Could I get you to fill out a white card and give it to Tess, please?
Sure.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to Item Number Three? Then we'll go ahead, and I will close the public comment until our April 8th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Right, thank you. Go ahead and move to Agenda Item Number Four. Um, this is also a continuance request for a resolution of the Planning Commission recommending to the City Council of the City of Victorville, an ordinance relating to the various amendments of Title 16 of the municipal code, including but not limited to transitional housing, reasonable accommodations, light auto repair, the definition section, the land use table, and the prohibition or regulation of certain problematic uses with an environmental exemption. Is there, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to Item Number Four? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment and continue this item to our May 13th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. All right. Uh, in compliance with the Brown Act, it is necessary for the Planning Commission to make available time for members of the public to address the Planning Commission for items of interest that fall within the Planning Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Please limit the length of your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the Planning Commission in regards to anything? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close public comments and move on to Item Number Five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Yes, we brought this, um, new business item to the commission, uh, to have a discussion and possible determination on the skateboard ramp at 12417 Cobalt Road. If I could start by passing out, uh, a four-page packet to the... Pictures of the, on the screen behind you, I don't know if I can get it in front of you, uh, but, uh, location and pictures of the skateboard ramp. But, um, so, there's been complaints, there's been some code enforcement activity, and then there's been the, the owner trying to make it legal. So the, the owner's coming to the city saying, "Well, how do I get it approved?" So on the first page, the definition of a structure. It's a structure, so it, it meets the definition of a structure, so then you ask, "Does it need a building permit?" And because it's over a hundred and twenty square feet in size, and also because of the way it's used with the railing on top, like, kinda like a balcony, the building division said that they would probably require a business, a, a building permit for that because, uh, the safety issue of somebody falling off the side or something. So they would wanna look at the, the railing, and then because of the size, it needs a building permit. So on the second page, have the accessory structure section of our code, and this tells you, or gives you the list of uses that are considered accessory structures for residential properties, and you have guest houses and commercial caretakers quarters, and then you have a section with gazebos, workshops, second garages, uh, poolhouses, et cetera. Then you have solar panels and wind-powered generators. Those are the accessory structures that are allowed in residential right now. So skateboard ramp isn't listed on there, and you wouldn't expect it to be, probably, but, uh, that's one issue that we need to deal with and address. Um, so move on to the third page, and this is the residential district page, and you have the general purpose and intent section, Section A, uh, language like "will produce an urban environment of stable, desirable character," and then you have numbers three and four. Uh, three is "encourage the continued vitality of existing neighborhoods," and four is "promote stable neighborhoods which are well-designed, safe, and pleasant places to live." So these are some of the, the language, some of the language that's in our code right now for why we have standards in place, or, uh, that we place on single-family residential. Um, not, not, the language on the back of that page isn't that strong, but it does say, "The zoning district is intended to protect established neighborhoods and single-family dwellings." And then the final page or document, you have the accessory structure requirements, and it has a maximum height on there. Uh, that's fifteen feet, and then structures that require building permit are supposed to be five feet from the side property lines and the rear property line. Again, those are, this is talking about accessory structures that are deemed acceptable in that list of, of accessory structures, so we haven't really deemed that yet, so that's part of the, the discussion for you tonight. And then on the, the last page, there's, there's some notes, but they don't really seem to apply, uh, in this case about, um, "All accessory structures and additions shall incorporate architectural treatments or features of the primary structure." That's because you wouldn't, you would, you know, win a shed or, uh, look for similar roof pitch materials, uh, as the main house. So those are the codes and regulations that we kinda have to go by. Um, and it's kind of a little bit of a gray area, so we thought that the best, uh, one of the, one of the things that we could do is bring it before the commission for discussion. We noticed the surrounding property owners, just the ones that are adjacent to it, and, um, you have two of them, it looks like, here tonight. You also received a letter from a neighbor who appears to be right next door, a support letter from him, and I'm, uh, we have the owner of the house as well here. With that, I would ask, uh, offer that you, uh, testimony, and then we can get into discussion or determine.
Well, we'll go ahead and open up the, the public comment. Um, I have got two cards, Robert and Kilpass, Kilpatrick. Um, do you wish to speak?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Robert Kilpatrick. My address is, oops, I was gonna say my work address, but address, home address is 14, 12410 Aspen View Circle. A lot of you know I've been in front of you for a lot of, uh, on a professional level in terms of, uh, uh, conditional use permits and tentative maps over the years. This is the first time I've been in front of the commission on a, uh, on a personal matter. Uh, this matter also kinda goes in, I, I've spec, spoke in front of this, uh, commission in relationship to the... This matter also kinda goes in, I've spoke in front of this Commission in relationship to the Development Code and Development, or Development Code standards and debate on lot sizes. And it's kinda ironic that, and one of my big issues was in lieu of the stronger development standards or even smaller, or larger lot sizes, that we focus on code enforcement issues. So, I find it ironic that I'm here before you this evening on just that, a code enforcement issue that has come up indirectly in my backyard. I live, again, on the house that is a catty corner and directly adjacent to the rear of the subject property at 12417 Cobalt. Actually, these photos that you see before you on your screen and in the packet and the letters in it are actually used from our backyard. And as you can see, the structure is, does exceed height for accessory, you know, use. And it's also had some, some issues where, I think one of the photos even shows unfortunately a dog standing on it that could jump over into my neighbor's backyard. With me this evening also is Raul Villa. He's a neighbor directly to the north of me. And then in the letter that I submitted to you, we've also had some complaints for the property owner to the north, Raul Mark, on, on issues. And we've had some code enforcement and police calls on, on this where we've had excessive noise and light into the, into the late hour evenings. Mainly, what I want, the bottom line is, this type of use should not be an allowable use in an R1 zone. Though, the reason it's gray is because why would you expect someone to build a skateboard ramp that has, generates nuisances in a residential district? The main issues of the nuisance have been the visual, as you can see, the noise, again, it's not just the, he's only had a party a few times, so I don't wanna say it's all, all the time, but but when it's in use, there's a lot, there is a reverberation that occurs, a very large rumbling that, that, you know, you can hear into the houses even. Even with the soundproofing houses, we know when that ramp is being used. And it does get noisy. And then secondly, and then thirdly, the other nuisance is light. What he's done is in order to, to light this thing, to use it at night, he's actually put three sets of floodlights on the eaves of this two-story house. And when those floodlights are on, it actually shines into the, into our backyards. And there was one instance where they were on, again, I think we woke up at 1:00 in the morning there, those lights were shining into our backyard, and we had to do a police call. And again, it's just, you know, it's just, it's very bright. So, if it wasn't for the ramp, you know, your typical single-family house, we all have them. We have, you know, flood lighting in our backyard, but they're always at that, that lower level primarily just to, to light the backyard. You know, none of us have really had even security lighting. I can't, even my neighborhood, no one's ever usually put security lighting in a backyard. It just, you know, floods the neighbors' backyards. So, with that, again, we're respectfully requesting that you do make the determination that this is not, and I gotta be careful. It's not that it's not an allowable use because, as, you know, staff's pointing out, we don't know if it's, or acceptable, I'm sorry, but acceptable use, but what we're saying is that it should be an allowable use. And again, we're requesting that it be removed, and you do not allow him to get a permit for this use. So, with that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I've got a question. You had mentioned some of the neighbors, or maybe even yourself, or some of the people around there had, had called code enforcement and sheriff's deputies?
Yes.
Do you know about when and how many times that may have been?
We've made about three or four calls. I, again, Raul, my neighbor to the north, has made numerous calls because, again, you know, they, they, he's talked to the neighbor about, you know, when parties, and then neighbors let us know, you know, there's been a, you know, a party. He's, you know, he's been letting us know, but the problem is, you know, before you know it, beyond 10, 11, you know, 12 o'clock, you know, that party goes on. And so, it kinda goes beyond even what, what that neighbor, you know, indicated how late that party was gonna go. So, we've had police calls of that. So, I don't wanna say, it's been three or four. This started with, the reason it's before you this evening is to start with the code enforcement. We filed for a complaint with code enforcement, I think back in June of 2014 is about when it started the process. And then code enforcement being as busy as they are with all the other, the other issues, so they actually, I think they finally got out there to cite it just three or four weeks ago, which is why it's before you now, because obviously the citation was to either get it approved or remove it, I'm assuming. And then that's why we're here this evening. So, so it is something that we've been looking forward to, the ability to have this come to fruition. You know, obviously, that's why we're here, is the determination of, is this should be, should this be used in a residential Jones District. It affects our property value. You saw a letter in there from a Realtor. Raul actually, because of all the complaints and health issues, is, wants to move. And we have some outstanding citizens that are wanting to move because of this use. So, who's, again, it's just, it gets back to the code enforcement. We're trying to beautify our communities, and we need to enforce the regulations we have on the books to beautify our community.
Mr. Chairman, ma'am. I wanna get an understanding. You're not opposed to recreation in general, for example. If I was to set up, to play horseshoes in my backyard, would you be opposed to that?
No. Actually, I was thinking, I've been thinking about it also. You have play, you know, play yards that exceed sometimes, you know, some of those newer swing sets and what have you that children have. But again, there's, yeah, that, or even a trampoline. Those are kinda temporary. Those are, those are uses that come and go, and again, very rarely, you might have a party, but, you know, kids aren't, usually aren't up at beyond 10 o'clock at night. So, it's very rare that those uses are being used in the hours. This is a use that almost attracts it to be used at any, at any time in the evening as opposed to a temporary. So, I'm not opposed to recreation. You know, if I had children, you know, I'd wanna maybe have a trampoline also, but that's where there's constraint, where we, you know, in society, we need to be able to tell our children, "Hey, keep the noise down," or something, if you're disturbing your neighbors. So, unfortunately, this is a little bit beyond your typical residential, you know, recreational uses that you'd wanna see.
I have another question for you. What if I was to show up with, let's say, 10 or 15 of my friends, and we had our horses, and we wanna play polo? Would you be opposed to that?
I'm sorry, horses?
Yes.
Well, horses aren't allowed in an R1 zone in our, in our district.
But I take you to be opposed to that, but you're not.
Yeah, well, again, it depends on the zoning. That's why we have zoning. That's why we can't have chickens in our backyard either. So, so, there are certain things. So, we have zoning to, to, to regulate those type of uses. But, to answer your question, yes, I'd be opposed to horses in someone's backyard because that's not why I bought this house, was to have horses, you know, there. Now, if someone wanted to have a, a party and have a pony ride or a petting zoo, that's a one, once-in-a-year type or once event. I'm not opposed to that. But if it's, but leaving a horse in someone's backyard, you know, longer than one day would be a problem.
You're making my point.
Thank you.
One of the things I will say is that the directive went over several things, and I wrote some of them down, that he considered to be accessories. And I hadn't found, to this point, a skateboard apparatus to fall in the category of accessory to the extent where it does not approaches the privacy of another individual. I just, but thank you for your comment.
Yeah. In other words, even a temporary, we've seen temporary ramps. If someone were to have it out there, one, a one-time event, let's say, again, it was something during a party and you wanted to set up a, you know, some of those are made where you can just bring it in, I wouldn't be, you know, we're not opposed to him using his backyard for, for standard residential uses. This is a little bit beyond. And some of the photos, he's actually had events there where there's been banners, and it's a little bit beyond a residential use.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Chad Collins?
Ladies and gentlemen. I, I'm the owner of the skateboard ramp. I'll just, I guess I'll just start by saying, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I'm blown away. I built the ramp for my son. My son's a, my son's a professional athlete. He's a skateboarder. We just got back from Germany. He travels all over the world. He's 11 years old, and, you know, he's like this skateboard prodigy, if you will, you know. Sponsors, you know, he skateboards for a bunch of companies, gets a paycheck. I built this for him. We actually moved out of the Orange County area to somewhere a little bit more isolated to where you could buy property. You know, I don't know how many of you guys are familiar with Orange County, but, I mean, it's very small property, you know, you're not, unless you got a lot of money. So, we chose to, you know, pack up our things and move out to the high desert. I have some family that live out here. And we found this house, and, and one of the things that we initially, I mean, we have tons of friends in Orange County and, and even up here that have skateboard ramps in their backyard. I mean, I, I will say that the majority of them don't have one as big as mine. They're usually a little smaller and stuff, but so maybe, you know, I went a little to excess with it. I was simply trying to build something. I also have a nonprofit organization that I help kids with. I have a bunch of sponsors that are on board with my organization, and I help children, you know, kids. If I go to the skate park and I see a kid that has a screwed-up skateboard, I'll help him out, you know, and I'll give him a new board. And, you know, same with shoes. And I utilize a bunch of, you know, different skateboarding sponsors and stuff like that to do this. The event that you see in, in the photo, the, the one event that we did have there, it wasn't really an event. It was actually my son's 10th birthday, and what he did was we got banners from all of his sponsors. They donated tons of product. And he invited all of his friends out for his 10th birthday. He hosted, little kid hosted, a best trick contest on his ramp. It was awesome, you know. He was, you know, we opened up the, you could see the second-story window. He had all of his friends down on the ramp. He was throwing out free product to them, like, free helmets, free shoe gift certificates, like. It was a great day. And so, as far as events, we don't have events there. My son uses this to, I guess, train or progress with his skateboarding. He's a competitive skateboarder. Like I said, he travels the world competing. In hopes that one day he'll make it to the X Games, you know. This is this kid's dream. And so, he utilizes this to train on. And, you know, to perfect his tricks and stuff. And that's the initial reason why I built it. Since we've moved in, we've became friends. Of course, it would happen with millions of skateboarders that drive by or skate by that are like, "Oh, my God, you got a ramp in your backyard. Can we skate that?" So, as you could see, the kids that are on the ramp, I mean, I've opened my doors to skateboarders because unfortunately, there is nothing in the city for skateboarders, you know, to, to skate on. There are streets. Some, some skateboarders don't skate on streets. And so, they see it, and I know when I was a kid and I used to skate, I would've drove by our house and said the same thing. "Oh, my God, can I please skate that?" So, as far as, as far as just kinda shedding some light on the use of the skate ramp, that's its use. It's for my son. In the beginning, when we first, when I first started building this, you know, I sunk, sunk well over five grand, seven grand into this ramp. Just the top sheeting alone is, each sheet that you see on the top is $200. That's 100% resin that they use the sheeting. It's called SkateLight. They use it for X Games. It's 100% weatherproof. I paid all this out of my own pocket knowing that my backs, my backdoor neighbor, Raul, and my other neighbors were fully aware of what I was doing, and they were okay with it. And the only neighbor that I really had come to me with any kind of problems was my direct backyard neighbor, which wasn't the gentleman that just spoke, but he lives next to him. So, he's directly behind it. He never posed any kind of problem with it in the beginning for the first year and a half. We had constructively came together. We made, you know, neighbor-to-neighbor agreements. We had time restrictions. You know, you can use it during the day up until 8 o'clock. At 8 o'clock, it was to be shut down. On the weekends, you can use it until, I don't even remember. I wanna say it was, it was around nightfall. You know, we never really used this ramp past nightfall because we never had lights. Those lights that are up, unfortunately, the gentleman that just spoke, that's not, the use wasn't for the ramp. I never had any intentions of using this ramp at night. The use was for, I had a friend of mine that's an electrician that came out. He put lights because we have like a U-shaped backyard, side yard, backyard, side yard. This side has a jacuzzi and a pool. It also has this land over here that we have a bonfire pit in. And if, like, the lights go on this side and they shine all this area over here by the pool, they shine, there's two of them that shine down on this side, and then there's another two that shine down the other side yard. That's all they were for. And that's all I've ever tried to use them for. I had no plans to turn my skate, my backyard into a skate park, by all means. I know he's mentioned that, and he's been very worried about that. Never was in my means at all. Have we had some parties there? Yes. There were, we had our wedding reception there. The skate ramp was not used. We had my son's 10th birthday party there. The skate ramp was used, but the, the party didn't even go until it shut down at, you know, like, nightfall. It didn't go that long. What I'm, what I'm trying to, I also have two, two letters from, one from my across-the-street neighbor that got a letter from you guys to appear, or if they wanted to. So, they wrote a letter. And then I also have one from the, directly to the side neighbor. And it seems to me like the only person really that's complaining is, it seems to me like the gentleman that just approached the, the, this podium thing. His whole concern sounds like he works with the city or something to do with coding, and he's really, you know, concerned about the zoning and coding and all this stuff in the particulars. When I first built this ramp, I called the city. I spoke to someone down in the building and Planning Commission. I don't know how important they were, but I asked them, "What do I need to build a skateboard ramp in my backyard?" And they said, and I asked them, "Do I need a permit?" They said, "No, you don't need anything as long as it's not attached to your house." And I said, "Okay, that's fine." I made sure, that's why in one of those photos, you could see, I put the whole thing up on cinder blocks. That thing can come down in a day. I could pull that whole thing down. And I did it like that because I talked to the city first. And so, you know, with that said, it, it doesn't sound like he really has a problem with it. The only person that has ever came to me and complained about it is Raul, which is my backyard neighbor, the directly backyard, which we came up with these hours of operation for the skate ramp, and there were some incidences that happened just recently where I thought, you know, in the past year of living next or in back of this neighbor, it seems to me like he's been monitoring my whole life. I have to approve everything with this gentleman. My wedding reception, when I came to him and said, "Hey, I just wanna let you know," because of course, I'm gonna let him know 'cause he's the only guy that calls me. He's not just reporting my ramp. I have a soundproof room in my house that he's claiming that he can hear my band playing, which we record, we not record, we practice in, in one of my rooms of, of the house. He's reporting that he can hear my band playing, and that was an issue. He told me that, you know, when I told him about my wedding reception, he about lost it. "Oh, Chad, oh, my God, what now? What now?" And it's like, man, I moved up here to get kind of in my own little area and get some property so we can, you know, have a good life. I've got three children. You know, we're not having major ragers. You know, we're not raging all the time. We've had a couple parties. I've, I've toned it down. We had one party that, that got a little out of hand. And one of my, they were skating at night, and one of the skateboards went over into his yard. Guy went over to go get it. Raul came out and had words with him. And so, after that happened, I promised him I would never do this again. I swear, not gonna have any parties like this. It got carried away. So, I guess, you know, my issue is the fact that I felt, I feel like I'm just being monitored by this one neighbor. And it's to the point to where I felt like I had a dad, like I had to call him, "Hey, excuse me, Dad, can I, you know..." Throw a junction, you know, this, this weekend and I'm not trying to be rude, but that's how it felt. My wife's sick of it. Uh, my son's sick of it, he can't even skate on that ramp alone without him coming out. Shooting videos of him, you know, like he's going to turn it into the cops, like. To me. It's a skateboard ramp, if we have a problem, talk to me, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pay. I don't feel like it would be fair for me to have to pay for a skateboard ramp. I will fix it. To where we can, you know, make it feasible to where I'm not bugging the neighbors. But there's no way I'm gonna pay extra money just to have a skateboard ramp, people don't pay for playground equipment. You know, where they have two-story with s- slides and stuff and. There's no way that I should have to, my son enjoys playing on his skateboard ramp. If it needs to be, you know, manipulated to where it needs to be smaller or whatever, I'm more than willing. I even talked to the city, uh, I don't see the gentleman up here, but I talked to him and I said, hey. What are the chances that I could just say screw the wood ramp? I'll get rid of it, I'll sell it or whatever. And we won't even skate on it until I sell it, or we won't even skate on it, period. And then I'll take the money along with some of my son's money and we'll put a concrete in the ground. Little skate thing for him, you know, and it'll be quiet. It won't have this, it's because it's wood. Cause when you skate on wood, it goes. And if you see the back, it's set up to where. It's almost like an, an echo, you're gonna get an echo off the, the back of that.
Yeah.
I'm willing to fix it and that's why I'm here, I'm willing to fix the problem, I'm not trying to fight with my neighbor.
Appreciate that, yeah, because the hard thing for us is because there's nothing that defines it in, in the code that we're having this discussion this evening.
Right.
Um, I'm glad to hear that you're willing to at least, to try to make some adjustments if, if possible to. Appease or, or make peace, that's, that's a good thing.
Definitely.
Um. I can tell you that one of the concerns that I have in just looking at the picture is the height, that, that, that is a concern. Um. Based upon just. You talk about like fees and paying things, you know, if somebody puts up a shed over 100 square feet, there, there are building guidelines that have to go. With that shed and yes, there are fees involved and things like that. So it's not unprecedented to say that as you have accessory uses, that there could be some fees involved, that it, depending on what the use is. So I get that, you know, you put in a pool, they're gonna get up, you know, there's fees that go along with putting in a pool, things along those lines. Um. Were there any questions for Chad?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um. I, 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 it's my impression that you are willing to uh come up with an alternative?
Definitely, definitely, I mean, I have, I have letters here from my neighbors that, that. They're all for what I'm doing, they don't even see the kids coming to my house as a problem, they think that it's awesome that I'm letting kids come in. You know, and, and skate the ramp because there's a bunch of kids that skateboard in the city of Victorville that I see. That come by my house and they're like, oh my God, and I let them, you know, I, I just, that's just me, you know, I think that they should have that.
Okay, uh, you, you do recognize the fact that something considered in the realm of normal by most individuals. Is something that's always tolerated. Um, there are times when someone can throw a football into someone else's backyard or as long it doesn't break a window and that sort of thing or. Um, so I understand uh the fact that you would like to support your son and skateboarding. I, I think it's good for a kid to do that. Um, the, I think the challenge is, and I, I won't call it a problem, I call it a challenge. I, it's always a challenge when it involves other people, you recognize that.
Of course.
So, I recognize that you probably live in a good community. And in spite of the fact of people saying one thing and saying they support it, they have no problem. When. This is how I feel towards some investigations. Um, unless somebody is uh placed under oath or cross-examined. It's, it's what they stated, but it's not necessarily comes out to be fact a lot of times. So when someone says something to me, I accept the fact, I acknowledge the fact, they said something to me. But that doesn't mean always I have to go further than that. So. I think you should uh present those two, two letters that you have or three, however many you have. And um. I am not, um, I myself uh would like to ask some questions of the staff pertaining to this issue. And um. And we'll go for there, but I can see the point where it can be construed as intrusive to other neighbors. When it does not fit the category of accessory structures.
Right.
It does not fit that definition.
I think that. Um, you know, one of my neighbors, I was just reading their letters. Um, before I, you know, when I got them and, you know, one of the letters and, and. He, he makes a valid point, he says, the noise level produced from skating is minimal compared to loud music or a barking dog. During the day, I mean, I'm allowed to have loud music on, right? I mean, unless somebody comes by with a decibel meter and is like beep 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 beep. Too loud, you know, I mean, people have loud music on, people have parties and stuff. Uh. I think that that needs to be kind of taken accounted for too, you know. That I could just be some crazy neighbor that sits there and likes to listen to loud music every day. You know what I mean, I'm not, I don't, but I have another side to me, my son. You know, and I mean, I'm sure we're not going to get out the decibel meters and measure loud music versus a skateboard ramp, but. You know, um, I'm just trying to say, you know, I mean. I, I, I want to work it out with the guy. You know, but I also want my son to be able to enjoy his home. Because that's what it is, this is his home. You know, and in his home, he should be allowed to have a skateboard ramp in his backyard. Maybe not the monstrosity that I've built for him, but. Um. Something that he can utilize.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
Yes, I did. You're, you're 100% right about that and I. Right, and, and uh, you know, I, I didn't think about that when we first seen the house, I thought of two things, it looks like. One of the, one of the things I'm sure you guys are aware of is people kind of look. Uh, they kind of look at Victorville like, oh, you know, why are you going to move way out there? And one of the things was, we found a nice neighborhood. And we know that there's a lot of bad parts of Victorville, you know, that there's some spots where I wouldn't want to live and raise a family. But. What we found was a nice. Neighborhood with neighbors that they can hang out with, the kids, you know. And a decent size. Lot of land, you know, and it, it, it didn't even, I guess I just didn't take it, I've never been a homeowner before. Never had this issue, I'm young, you know. And I said, hey, I'm going to build a skate ramp, not thinking that. Anybody was going to have a problem with it, because in my eyes, exactly like this gentleman wrote in the letter, that was my thought. It's during the day, we're not going to use it at night, so who cares?
I have another question for you, um. Lost my train of thought.
How long has it been up?
Uh, it's been up for approximately, uh, we bought the house December 2nd. About. Thousand thirteen, I want to say. About two years, we lived there about two and a half years. Going on two and a half years. Um, it wasn't up right away, it, it was up probably, I want to say about six months after we moved in. What's that?
Year and a half, two years roughly?
Yeah, it's been about a year and a half, two years. And we, and, and, I mean. Just, that brings to mind again. You know, the simple fact that when we first built it, it's been up for, you know, about two years now. When we first built it, we had no problems. There was only one person that had a problem with it and that wasn't when we first had it. Everything was fine for a good year and a half. It wasn't till. I believe he came over, or he didn't come over, he. Told my daughter that her and her friends couldn't sit on the ramp at, because she was having a little birthday party with her friends. He told her that she couldn't sit on the ramp, I thought that that was out of line. You got a problem, you come and talk to me, you know, you don't tell my daughter and her friends that they can't be on their own house ramp. Um, that was one incident and then the second incident was when it was in the middle of the day, I had about. As many people as you've seen in that photo over there skateboarding on it and he came out and said, not. Um. He didn't call me and say anything like, you know, hey, I don't want you skating on the ramp or anything. He went to my company and my guest and said, there's way too many of you guys on this ramp. Going to tell me how many people I can have, that's, that's the monitoring that I'm talking about, like, I feel like he's monitoring my whole life. Like, he's obviously aggravated.
Well, what I've, what I have found in the past is usually these things start off small, but they build up over time. And that's generally, I mean, I, I've had the experience of inconsiderate neighbors, not saying this is a situation here.
Right.
But I've had that situation where, yeah, you have a party and it goes until one o'clock in the morning, okay. But then you do it the next weekend and the next weekend and the next weekend. And after three or four times, it's becomes. A nuisance and it's because, you know, you can't enjoy it, you can't, I can't even enjoy, you know, you can't enjoy your backyard or your. House without dealing with the inconvenience of, of another neighbor, again, not saying this situation.
Right, right.
Um.
One more question.
I understand.
Okay.
Um, do you remember, remember the name of that individual that gave you permission to do this, that works for the city?
I've been asked that so many times.
Well, you know, I'd recommend to you that you never, ever get permission from somebody you can't identify.
And you know what, I mean. It, it was so innocently played, honestly, it, it's just. Dad trying to hook his son up with a ramp, that's it, you know, and I tried to go about it the right way. And the biggest question that I had was, do I need a permit? No, they said no. So I wouldn't have spent, you know, well over five grand on this ramp. I don't know anybody that would, if they didn't think that it was going to be okay. I thought I was, you know, I went full bore, you know. Nose dived right into it and said, I'm going to dump some money into this ramp for my son, the city was. You know, basically said, as long as it's not attached to the house, I'm good, so that's what I did and so. And I do respect your, your question and I do completely understand that. But just really innocently played, you know.
Okay. Any other questions?
Uh, no, there's nothing underneath that, that is a, a concrete patio that stops about maybe. Two to three feet. From where you see those cinder blocks that the ramp is resting on, it stops two to three feet under the ramp.
Just got elected, that is really, really uh adamant about having a skateboard park.
Right.
And uh.
I was here at that meeting.
Okay, so you know, maybe you should uh talk with him some more, get one faster. Um, excessive lighting is a, a problem. Um, you don't, we don't allow flood, floodlights so the neighbors can see that. Um. Uh, excessive noise, that's all into consideration. So the, the, the main problem I have is the size of the uh, and I realize if your son is trying to become a professional, the larger the ramp, the better off it is. You know, you probably like to have us skate all the way around the house. But I, I have somewhat of a problem with that, I, I, I think that it has to be. Uh, maybe a little bit lower, a little bit narrower or something, in my opinion. I mean, I commend you for doing it for your son, I, I really do. It's just that uh, we also have to kind of please the neighbors, since we don't have a code. Try to figure out what we can do to please everybody, that's why we're here.
And I agree.
That's why we're here.
I agree, by all means, I, I, I didn't want it to get to this level. I tried my hardest and. You know, I guess, uh.
Could the ramp be made smaller?
Oh, definitely, definitely, and I, I, I think that. In my head, I, you know, I thought. You know, oh, to that extent to do that. I might as well put it on Craigslist, I actually, to tell you the truth, I have already put the ramp on Craigslist. Um, and I've gotten a couple bids on it already. Um, because my idea was, I know how I could make everybody happy. Ditch the wood and just dig down with the help of the city trying to help me figure out how I can get a permit or something. So my son, if we dig out like a pool style area, then. We can put concrete in there and that's quiet. You roll on concrete and it's just. You roll on wood and you're hearing all these. You know, excuse me, but.
Wheels don't make a lot of noise on a skateboard, on the wood? On the wood they do.
On the wood they do.
On the wood they do.
The skateboard themselves don't make noise, when you hear a skateboard roll, it's just. But because it's on wood, you see the, the wood, especially in the heat, the weather conditions, it, it uh. Expands and it, you know. And contracts and so what you get, what you're left with is gaps in between the surface. So when the skateboard wheels hit that, you hear the. So when you're going fast on it, you're hearing. You know, and I, I get it, it could be annoying if you're sitting there trying to go to sleep and it is really that loud. Um. I, I mean, I live in the house that it sits in and it's not that loud to me, but I'm, I'm only me. You know, I can't judge anybody else's annoyance level, you know.
Well, it seems to me there should be some kind of compromise here.
Definitely.
And uh, that's, I guess, what we're here for, I, I would hate to say, no, we don't want it. I wouldn't do that, but a compromise some way.
And Larry and the rest of the commission, it, it, um, we'd. Think of it in terms of the entire city though, we're not trying to make a deal with, with Chad. We're trying to make it, what works in every residential zone, which is what we're talking about, the code, so. So I think your, your, your comments are exactly right, this isn't appropriate, this scale and size ramp is not appropriate in single family residential. So I, I think that's what I'm hearing, I, it seems to be the consensus.
That's, that's what, uh, you know, I haven't spoke yet, but I'll, I'll speak up, I do agree with that and uh, Mr. Collins, I just want you to know that I, I appreciate everything you've said, you seem to be real. Real open, real honest with us and you're laying the cards out because it's a situation in a. In a small lot neighborhood and I really appreciate that and I, I believe everything you're saying. And um, as far as uh, your sport and the activities. Um, my background is I, I've spent, I spent six years on the Vans Warp Tour, I, I can appreciate those pro skaters, good guys. And I know what your son's trying to do, I know the cost to build those, the half pipes, I know. What you guys are doing, I do appreciate that, the only problem I find is that unfortunately, it's done on a tiny little 7200 square foot lot. I live on a tiny lot like this, just like the neighbors behind you do.
Right.
And I gotta put myself in their shoes. And I, I look at the scale of it, I don't see it as a toy, I see it as this, a tool for your son to become a professional, I hope he does. Um, I see this as a tool, not a toy, um, you know, it's not a little uh. Trampoline, it's not a kid's swing set, you know, um, you know, it seems like according to the neighbors, it looks. Um, you know, it seems like, according to the neighbors, it looks like it's, it's lit up. I, I would if I had this big of a thing. I, I definitely would. And I have parties too. But I think it should be Mountain View Acres, uh, outlying areas of Victorville and a larger lot. Maybe you've got a friend's place that you can put it there and then go practice skating. Um, a lot of places in Asbury, Apple Valley, you know, a lot of places would be really well suited for this and supported. And, um, I just, if, if my neighbor put something up that, and I appreciate the ramp and the sport, but if they put that thing up, it's, it's big, it's ugly, it seems unreasonable to me in comparison to everything else that's around there. Matter of fact, this commission has spent a lot of time just upping the design standards on the single-family residential lots for new construction in Victorville. And a lot of the debate was how to make the back side of the house look more appealing because we do see those. It's not just the front that needs to look nice, you know? And, um, it's not that you're wrong, I just think it's not appropriate. And thinking like, like Mr. Borger said, citywide, uh, if this is acceptable here, I'm looking at the aerial, it's acceptable here and here and here and here. And, you know, honestly, if nobody would have come out and, and even said anything, we probably wouldn't be here. And if we were here trying to figure out how to do this, and nobody complained, hey, nobody complained.
Right.
Let's go a different way. But we do have two individuals that claim that their property values or their lifestyle is being affected. And I really have to unfortunately take that into consideration very heavily. So I, I can't, I'll be straight up, I can't support having this on that lot. Whether, whether you remove it and build it a bowl, and that's up to the city and everything else, that's, that's you. You know, I can't even suggest that. But what sits there today and, and the way it is, I'm gonna have to lean against it.
So, with that said, um, I mean, going back to, uh, what this gentleman said over here is, um, what size, I mean, since there are no, uh, I don't even know the proper word for it, but stipulations on a ramp in a backyard, since there are no, uh, you know, whatever, um, what size would be considerable?
I think there'd have to be some study on that. Since we wanna do this citywide, make a code of some sort.
Well, it starts with a minimum of 120 square feet. So if it's 120 square feet structure, it needs a building permit, technically by the building code.
Okay.
We, we have also, uh, spent the last three years trying to beautify our city. And, you know, no offense to, to you, but this is not, this not enhance your neighborhood. It,
Try to make it look good.
Uh, I, I, but, and it looks dangerous to me. I would think that there is a certain dangerous element to it. Um, that, um, that I, I wouldn't want to pay the, your insurance for those kids that come over and, and do this, this skating. I really wouldn't.
Well, I mean, we've, I mean, just to throw all the cards out there, we've had a fifteen-year-old kid come over and break his leg on the ramp. And unfortunately, this day and age, I think that parents are a little bit more, they understand. You know, I mean, this isn't the old school to where, you know, people are just sue happy. I mean, I highly doubt that they're gonna get a lawsuit out of me for a fifteen-year-old using his own brain to skateboard on a ramp that size. If he didn't know how to do it, he probably shouldn't have stepped on it.
Well, that's, you're taking a really large risk, I have to tell you.
I mean, I, I guess I am, but, I mean,
Well, I think the, the city manager kinda mentioned at the last meeting too, where, uh, if the city were to do a skate park, that there aren't liability, there isn't a liability for them because when you step onto, like he's saying, when you step into that skateboard park, um, if you get hurt, you knew you, you could get hurt.
Well, then why do I have to have workers' compensation on my own house, huh?
I kinda got a question to kind of address something that you had said in regards to possibly putting in a bowl type of situation. If he were to go something along those lines, would that possibly then, would that fall underneath a pool?
This sounds like what happened two years ago when he said, hey, I wanna build a ramp. Is there a problem with that? No, go right ahead. But he didn't show us a diagram of how tall it was, or how wide it was, or how much of the backyard it took up. Yeah, go right ahead.
There was a phone call.
So I would hate to do that. But there, I don't see what the issue is. It, I mean, yeah, there could be permits. It's not a pool. Uh, he could drain his pool and skateboard in his pool right now. I, you know, that, there's, I, we can certainly look into it. I can certainly ask around, but I would hate to give an,
Okay, understandable.
Yeah, and for me, it's not, what are we getting into, like, construction designs? It's whatever you wanna do. Don't make it affect the neighbors. Noise, code enforcement, light, you know, all those things that we all, I live in a, a house exactly the same size as, as you and your neighbors. So I have barking dogs, I have lights and things like that. But is it out of the norm? You know, I think that's what we're kinda getting at here, mostly. Not the construction details of what you will do, cause that's really up to them.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to, um, comment regarding Commissioner Huber's, uh, comment as it relates to the study. Um, the, the petition had mentioned something equate to a swimming pool, but nevertheless, something of that magnitude requires study from engineering, architect, the whole nine yards. And as the director indicated, uh, decision regarding this magnitude will affect the entire city of Victorville. And, you know, um, Commissioner Porter gave a suggestion regarding land use, five acres, three acres, whatever the case may be, so, um, this is not a delicate matter that you can expect the commission to snap their fingers, wave a wand, and make a decision because it does require, as the commissioner indicated, a study. So, thank you.
So, as far as just walking away from here, where are we at with the ramp? What am I doing?
Right now, I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna close the public comment and then bring it back to the commission for some discussion, if we have any questions with staff, and then see where we're gonna proceed.
Very good. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this item before I go ahead and close public comment? Hearing now, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment, bring it back to the commission.
I would like to see staff do some studying and see what size skateboard ramp would be feasible for us.
Are there any other cities that may have it on their code that could possibly give us a guideline? Do we?
I don't wanna sit here and say, tear down your park, your skateboard park. You can't have it no more. I think he, he's, can, some type of a park, uh, that would please his neighbors. That's what I'm concerned. How are we gonna have the neighbors not complain? Lights is a problem, noise is a problem, and size, looks. That's my concerns.
Can I share those concerns? Yeah? Or any direction that we need to go, or just, just saying they bring it back?
Isn't it sort of an attractive nuisance right now? I would think that he's, something has to be done about it right away. I mean, I don't think we can wait to, he said he could take it down in a day. That's what he said. Well, you, or you might sell it though, in a day, so you might be all right.
I agree. We do have complaints. We do have code enforcement case on it. Uh, we do need to do an activity. We can put it on hold. Um, you know, I don't know if he'd be willing not to use it, like he said, where it doesn't impact the neighbors. I don't know whether the neighbors, I don't know how long a study would take, you know, a couple weeks. Uh, we, it would be the April eighth, you know, before we could come back to you. I don't know if that's too long. Uh, again, I think the overall, the overall determination, I thought we were headed towards this isn't appropriate for a single-family resident for, on small lots like this. And if that's the case, then he needs to take it down. And he needs to, he needs to change it to something that doesn't need a building permit, um, that we wouldn't monitor, that, you know, same as a trampoline, or same, it wouldn't affect privacy, it wouldn't affect lighting, it wouldn't affect, it wouldn't be a nuisance to the neighbors. Let it go. I, I, I wish we had a place for a skateboard park where he could take the whole ramp and move it to the, the city.
Basically, his compliance would be less than 120 square feet?
Correct, correct. Well, it doesn't require building permit, and therefore we, we don't regulate. Don't regulate, you know, we, we regulate lot coverage, we regulate height, size, uh, use type things, but, and that's what I'm saying, that if you think in the list of accessory structures that skateboard ramp is acceptable, then we need to look at regulations. If you don't think that skateboard ramp is acceptable, then make sure that that's clear, that this size and scale of a ramp isn't acceptable. And take regulations that say you can have this size ramp, that, you know? A, a little hard to do. We can certainly do it. I mean, there are different things he can do. He can have concrete in the middle, and then he can do a quarter pipe over here and a quarter pipe over there, and have less than 120 square feet there, and a less than 120 square feet there. Doesn't require building permit, doesn't necessarily mean it won't be a nuisance to the neighbors, depending on how he uses it or when they use it. So those are the type of issues that we're talking.
That would be a different situation. That would be an if in the future. Today, we're being asked, what do we do right now in this current situation?
And, that's the, up to you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please. Public hearing?
At 120 square feet, if I stay within those guidelines, bring this to regulation, um, so my son can enjoy it. I would hate to just say, um, you know, in the meantime, I could get busy on it. Now, I, I don't, I don't disagree with you guys. I mean, it probably is ugly to some people, but, and there's, you know, I'm not the only one living in the neighborhood. Probably different. Um, but, like I said when I first came in, I'm willing to, to figure this. Uh, I mean, what's the height restriction? What is that? So I know. So then I could say, okay, let's bring my son's ramp down to, I, I thought you said fifteen feet, but that seems really high because that is only nine feet right there. So,
Well, again, that's intended for a gazebo, a garage, a second garage, a guest quarter. That's what that fifteen foot is in reference to. It's not intended to reference a skateboard ramp because a skateboard ramp hasn't been shown to be an accessory structure.
What if, what if I said, uh, for the time being, I can take the larger sides down to how big the smaller sides are, and then make it?
I guess that's, that's where we're looking for detection and determination from the commission because if it doesn't require a permit, we can't require you to get a permit. If it, if it meets a permit requirement, then we can. If it's gonna be a nuisance, regardless of what size it is, that's gonna be the neighbor thing, you know, so that's the kind of, that's why we brought this before you, cause it's one of those issues.
In my head, the nuisance thing can happen regardless if there's a skateboard.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. No, I mean, we have nuisances for a lot of different reasons in the city. Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman? I apologize, Chris. Um, based upon what the director have said regarding R2, and I'm looking at, again, accessory structure. Um, I'm prepared to make a decision, um, not to have the structure because I have to consider studies, I have to consider, um, the city of Victorville, other, other things. So I wouldn't be in favor of, uh, of, uh, at this particular timeframe because it doesn't fit this defined definition of accessory structure.
Public hearing, if there's any more comments, and then we can bring it back.
Phil Patrick? I'll make this very brief. Uh, I think if it was the entire structure was below the fence, I think we'd, we'd be okay. In other words, the visual portion is what we can see, and he's absolutely right. If you were to, you know, it's like a swimming pool. And, and, and I'll use, the problem is, what's happening is the entire structure, including the railing, is below the fence, is because, again, it's becoming a situation where we've got, people are standing on it. It's like, it's, we, I know people can look out their bedroom windows and look in your backyard, but this is just so intrusive. So I think the compromise, you know, when we talk about a compromise that we're having, is, yeah, if he were to reconstruct the structure,
Even if they stood on it and could still look over your fence.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, the railing, so you can't see it. Yeah, I think standing on the head might look over. No different than a kid jumping on a trampoline. I mean, I'm saying,
Well, no, if the structure's below the fence and it's six feet high and somebody stands on it, they're gonna be five feet over your fence.
Oh, but I'm taking railing and all. If he's got railing, what's gonna happen is his landing.
Oh, railing and all. Okay, gosh.
Everything. If everything were below the fence, then we would, then, you know, then, like you said, if you were to build a pool or something, the noise then, because the fence also becomes a noise attenuation feature. You know what I'm saying? The reason we're hearing it is because there is nothing stopping the noise. And I don't even wanna get it to trees or anything to hide it. I think it needs to be below the fence. So that's, he's already mentioned that he'd be willing to, to rebuild, you know, use the sale of the, of the ramp and rebuild something, and then come to the permit. So if the staff is looking for, if the commission or staff is looking for direction, that could be that simple too. Something that large, if it's below the fence, that wouldn't be a problem.
Thank you. Go ahead and I'll close public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with, um, Commissioner Dew. I think that, um, I think it's inappropriate in our one area, and, um, I would be in favor of abating it, but giving him a sufficient time to, to do so by either selling it or dismantling it.
But we still haven't determined what we're gonna do with a skateboard ramp for anybody else. What if he wants to put one?
I'm, I'm saying that I think that this should be abated. If he has any other, if he gets below the 120 feet, uh, that's, that's fine. That's up to him. But as long as he doesn't cause a public nuisance.
So it's not an accessory structure?
It's not an accessory structure, in my opinion. It's something that should be, uh, if it was a, if it was a roller skating rink that, and you know how noisy they are, would we allow that? I, you know, where do we stop? Um, and, and our lots are really, um, small in comparison to, um, um, the outlying areas. And we, we've got plenty of areas where he could, in my opinion.
Vote on this, or is it just, is it direction?
Uh, yes, a vote would be good for direction. Do you give us direction or determination, either one?
Well, then I will move that we, uh, have, uh, him abate the, the ramp, uh, and give him three months to do so. I don't believe it's an accessory structure, period.
Talking.
But then, does he have some direction, what he can do with that?
When I say abate, he's got to remove it.
Remove that? And then is he gonna be, be able to come back with something smaller?
Well, if it's less than 120 feet, he doesn't have to come back.
120 square feet? Can staff, or could he ask questions in regards to maybe some?
Oh, absolutely, sure.
He'll work with you.
So we have a first by, uh, Commissioner Porter and a second by Dew to have the skate ramp abated. Is there a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Extentions, thank you.
Thank you.
Listen, we're giving you three months to remove the ramp. You can come with, you can put something smaller in less than 120 square feet. Looking at, if you have questions, staff is definitely willing to work with you to help you out, and give you some guidance and guidelines. And, uh, we say give him three months for that. Building, yeah, correct. Correct.
Thank you. Yeah.
All right, item number six, non-conforming sites.
Yes, as I mentioned in the, uh, pre-workshop, uh, we provided, uh, some more discussion. We discussed this a little bit last month, I believe, or I think it was December, maybe, yeah, December. And the issue with sites that are non-conforming, don't meet the current codes, uh, regulations either as the site or the uses on them. Um, we looked at other cities and found that Victorville is pretty stringent. Uh, we do have pretty good codes in comparison with other cities. We provided information. We'd like to, you know, if we would need more time, uh, just to review this and come back with some more comments or more review, we can do that as well.
Perfect, thank you. I've been open up public hearing for item number six. If anyone wishes to discuss item number six. Close public commission, or public comments.
Uh, yes. I, I do think that, um, the non-conforming sites and uses are so varied that, uh, and each one, you know, you might have one that isn't really exactly, or it might be a non-conforming site that, it, like we had tonight, and I think item two. I thought that was very appropriate because it was with, uh, right next to, um, multi-family residential. And, um, and it's a, a non-intrusive type of business. And when you, you take these, these uses, one, And, um, and it's a, a non-intrusive type of business. And when you, you take these, these uses, one at a time, you can analyze them and how they affect the neighborhood and for health, safety and welfare. And, and you can make conditions on them that will, that you could even make conditions that, um, that have certain time limits to do certain things. And, um, I think that that would be a, a really good way to do that because some of them are, some of them are, you know, they're old and they're decrepit. We're not gonna let them, we're not gonna let them stay that way. But some of them have been, you know, kept up and as far as the sites are concerned and as far as the uses, that's, um, that's a way that, um, we can find some of the things that we think are intrusive in our city. Tattoo parlors, too many, uh, ash places, too many, you know.
Right.
That's the way I feel.
Have some direction?
I'd think, this was, for me, I spent a lot of time trying to study this item, you know, because as usual, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking in my mind, I'm, I'm thinking of older areas of Victorville. I'm thinking of buildings, you know, non-conforming uses, really old buildings, the parking lot shot. The useful life is almost done, you know, when it's the non-conforming building, you know, and I think, well, how much longer until somebody buys that property in this cycle or the next cycle and, or it burns down and, or they demo it and rebuild? Buildings made it this far and there's probably a non-conforming use possibly in that building as well. Is it about at the end of its lifespan or do we just all of a sudden jump to it and say, start throwing hundreds of thousands of dollars at this little building that's worth $80,000, you know?
That's true.
And then you're like, well, then I guess that just forces them to bulldoze it. Is that fair? So I'm going, these are the things I'm going through in my mind. I know exactly where you guys with staff are coming from. Um, I kinda, it's hard for me to understand the code because there's so much on this one about all the possibilities, variables and details. Um, then I put it into my own, um, experiences working in commercial real estate, which I, my mind goes to that as well, it has to. And I think, okay, I've had experiences with non-conforming uses that missed it by 90 days. And now we've got a big problem with a CUP, even though the business was fine there for so many years and didn't have a problem and the neighborhood was fine with it. Um, I, I wrote down a lot of stuff and some notes and I don't even, you know, if we're not voting on this tonight, I don't wanna go waste time going through this if there's gonna be more. Okay. What I, what I was looking at today, and this just was one thought on the non-conforming uses, I wrote, what about non-conforming uses after the 90-day allowance that are specific to the building and the site and are actually a good fit with the neighborhood? Because this, this proposal is showing that, you know, you got 90-day window and then it's maybe, maybe not, maybe you can get a conditional use permit, maybe interim. I give an example, auto tire shop technically no longer allowed according to the land use table for this zoning, but it is and has been a perfect fit in the existing tire shop building. The tire shop tenant moves out. By the time the property goes to market, finds replacement tire shop tenant, negotiates the lease and finally applies for a business license with the city, it of course would be well over 90 days. In some cases, this tenant would be told by the city that they would not be able to get a business license because the use is not allowed in that zoning. Sometimes an interim use permit could be applied for. The city would collect $450 and attach conditions of approval, which may include financially substantial property improvements. Um, then I wrote, is this fair if no physical changes are being made to the property? Should the re-establishment window be longer? Should business uses be looked at based on the suitability of the property in the neighborhood or strictly based on the black and white land use chart? And then I, I agree that major physical changes or construction and building permits to a certain level should and could trigger some, you know, property improvements, which we have seen. Um, I did some reading and, and looking at non-conforming use websites. There's consultants, there's other cities, there's other newspaper articles on this stuff. And a couple of things I ran across was a, um, a guy that's a, a pretty famous planning consultant down south and he said, most zoning codes treat all the non-conforming uses as evils to be tolerated until, until the day that they can be squeezed out of existence. More nuanced treatment of non-conforming uses can be calibrated. The, the precise terms will depend on the situation on the ground in each community and neighborhood. Which is kinda what I was kinda talking about, but that doesn't give an answer of what we're trying to get to tonight.
Actually, that kind of does lead into the partial import or the timing, the time limits like Paul is talking about too. It sounds like, it sounds like you're talking about the same thing. Talking about saying, okay, well, you've got this issue. Well, okay, we'll give you, you've got this long to start working on fixing that issue. You got another issue. But then it also goes back to your overall point of, is it a big waste of money if in 20 years, 20 years, a bill is gonna be worthless?
Yeah, and, and most of what I just talked about happened to be on the use side with the 90-day window. Obviously, if somebody leaves that property, the property's non-conforming, that a new use comes that isn't even allowed in that district, but the building's perfect for it. Normally turned away. I mean, that's what our code's for. But it, could there be more gray? Um, area and one other guy? Dave Aldine is a, is a California civil engineer. And I'm gonna wait for Chris to listen to this one because you're gonna like it.
All right, go ahead.
This guy says, I understand why it's often comfortable to rely on black and white standards, but the world is often gray and the interpretation of gray areas to the all, overall benefit of the community should be part of the job description for planning staffs. Then he said, I believe the dicta, if your planning director isn't at risk of being fired at least once a year, then he's not doing his job. But really that happens when you start to push to the, it's, you know, it's easy to say, we got it black and white, this is it. But out on the streets, and I, I, I'm speaking this because that's what I do for a job too on the other side. It's, rarely, it's rarely black and white. And rarely are the buildings in new, perfect upgraded code condition, especially when you're chasing ADA. And every single property I have, we're chasing sprinkler backflows. You just go get a business license, you gotta upgrade all this stuff. So what about the guy with the older property and he's not hurting anybody, assuming health, safety, moral welfare, all of that is being met? It, it scares me to vote to start saying, you guys are gonna start paying the piper when some building department guy goes, got you. On the other hand, I'm the first one to complain that our city might be looking rundown.
But it might, it might be a really nice building.
How do I absorb this?
Or it might be an, it might be a, a, appropriate use, just like you said. Why the, the conditional use permit is, is really a way to do it because you, you get the control without the, but without the, taking the game, the, the guy into bankruptcy. I don't think we wanna do that. I think we wanna do the most. We'll look better all the time. We have a lot of non-conforming, um, sites.
And that, does that then, Chris and Paul, does that go into kinda like the, the suggest, the three scenarios, the partial enforcement? Cause my notes there, it said, it seems like too much detail and too much itemized control involved for, for us to, for you to make, okay, if, property has this little bit or that little bit that we do this and has this and that in the timeframe, is it even trackable?
Yes. Not currently. We're supposed to get a new, uh, a replacement for our computer system in the next year and it would be trackable then. No, all, all good ideas, all good discussion, Rob. It's, and all good issues.
And I have no real answer.
No, no, you went a lot of different directions there. It's hard to have any answer for all of that, but, uh, you know, we, we do, we are, that's what we're looking for, solutions. It's, and if, like I said, we're not, if we don't get a direction today, maybe we come back next month and, uh, come back with a little bit more, little bit, we can do a little bit more discussion on it. We can do a little more city study if you want, uh, or we can just let you mull it over and drive around town and look at some of the buildings that we're talking about and, and the sites and the, try and get some ideas.
That would be, um, something that I'd be interested in doing.
Me too, because a, a real world scenario of, look at, look at this building. Here's what, on the city staff's side, this thing's missing. And if we can catch them on a business license, if we can catch them on a 90-day non-conforming use window, if we can catch them on this, we're gonna ask for this, that and the other.
One of the things that I've asked staff to start doing is when the counter guys start hearing people come in and start asking questions about a location that's recently been vacated. CED on Bear Valley Road, right by the railroad tracks, you look down on them. They were one of the first examples. Ask them to, to do a pre-submit on it. And meaning that somebody goes out there and walks the site and says, what is this building and site lacking? What is it, what is it missing? What is it non-conforming for? And what would we be asking the new tenant to fix? If they need, go in there with a conditional use permit. And so we've been doing that, uh, and that might be a good example. Maybe I can bring that, maybe we can give you that file. There's no curbing around the landscape planners. There's no trash enclosure. Um, there, you know, the striping on the pavement, the pavement's cracked, it's concrete, it's torn up. Uh, there's not enough of it. Uh, you know, those type, those are the type of things that we're talking about. It's a metal building. It has no architecture. It has a sign, a roof sign on the top of the roof so you can see it from Bear Valley. It, you know, it's got a lot of things that are violations now that we wouldn't allow. And so that may, maybe we bring that back as a sample. Uh, we put that in your next agendas and we can talk about that and take it a little further.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to ask the, uh, the director a couple of questions. Uh, first of all, when, when you take into account, um, someone is out of compliance, are there extenuating circumstances?
What do you mean?
Like for instance, someone, um, I can't give an example, but I'm, I'm speaking in terms that, uh, compliance requires standards, correct?
Well, the circumstance may have been, we changed the code. He might be in automotive repair business like Rob is referring to, in an automotive service building. But we didn't, we decided that we don't want automotive repair in C2 anymore. It's a wasted space. There's better areas for it. It starts to look rundown after, you don't wanna see repaired cars in your retail areas. So we moved, we removed automotive repair from C2. That was the extenuating circumstance that made it no good.
So our, our, our approach as relates to standards are subject to change?
They can be changed as we need them, yes.
And the need to change something is for what reason? Is it because of, um, the suit one person or we have a, a higher goal regarding, we're trying to, as Commissioner Porter says, uh, there are a number of people who think that the city of Victorville is, uh, as relates to appearance, has, um, fallen behind to some degree. So what is the goal here? Is the goal to improve the image of the city of Victorville that we don't have, um, distasteful properties?
Is, it is, yes, that is the goal. In addition to also, uh, the change from automotive repair was to try and make our C2 retail areas more prosperous. Or sales tax generating. So there are, there are image, there are aesthetic reasons, there are, uh, just overall zone to make a zone better. We, we, in 2008 with the general plan update, we went through the entire zoning district, uh, use by use. And we said, what, what is not appropriate in, in different zoning districts that was in there? And we took them out and we moved them for, for various reasons. They might not be compatible together, uh, for use-wise, noise-wise, um, you know, compatibility type issues. I believe three of, three or four of you were on the commission when we did that and completely revised those zone districts and uses.
Areas that used to be unincorporated that were now part of the city, that had buildings pre-existing? Drive down Palmdale Road and you see those two little bars that are just kinda sitting out in the middle of nowhere by themselves. But they're, they've been there forever.
Thank you.
Well, I like, uh, the discussion and that's, um, and it definitely could lead to some, a 90-day window thing, I guess, is a, is a big one. Also being in the business thing. Days, I think six days. Possibly finalize all the, whatever permits and licensing and just agreeing on terms and build outs for if there's any changes required. Maybe we do need to get a little more.
Sounds good. That sounds good. I'll come back with a sample and a little more discussion.
And I like Paul's idea too, of going to go out and looking at some of these buildings. I mean, I'm, I'm very familiar with CED just since it's right, right across the street from me, but, um, but I agree, yeah.
And, and the pre-application, that would satisfy the time requirement? The 90-day?
Well, I think they're more referring to the technical aspects of a business getting all of their ducks in a row, I think, in 90 days and be able to get back to the city, uh, before the 90 days lapses and that use goes away. That's what I think the belief they're referring to. So CED would have lapsed, they've been out of that building for six months, I believe, or something. So. Yeah, if another business would have wanted to go back in there under the same use, they would have, they're saying that there's not enough time in 90 days to even do that, so.
We'll bring that back for an extra.
And one other thing to think about, the, the CUP versus just the business license. Anybody has to get a business license. I've seen lots of times where you don't need a CUP, you go to get a business license, the staff holds that, the business license says, no, you have to do X, Y, Z before you can get your business license. I've seen that. Um, and then the, the, the tenant then has to go fight the landlord, goes, your property, not mine. You know, uh, either way.
No, that's typically tied to a CUP though.
Is it?
Yeah, we usually don't, we usually, yeah.
Oh, or, or, or a, um, a, a building permit. It would be a, a building permit too.
Correct. It might, might need some improvements for a building permit, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there, but there are things
Yes.
Tie it to it.
No.
Okay.
Agree.
Yep. Now we'll go ahead and move on to item number seven, garage and yard sales.
Again, just a discussion item. Uh, we were asked at the last meeting to come back to investigate what other cities do. And, uh, we've provided that in a table format. Some of the suggestions, uh, that we had talked about previously were going to a set schedule of yard sales and Fontana and San Bernardino both do that. That was kind of interesting to see. And Fontana only allows four yard sales per year. They set the dates for those four, uh, events. And then San Bernardino does 12 per year, uh, once a month and the dates are set. So just interesting information for you. Uh, don't need direction today, um, unless you're ready to provide it, but, uh, we'll keep looking, keep.
The only thing is, is I've only seen one instance of one that I thought just went on forever. And it was over on Yates Road. Uh, but I think that that's, somebody must have complained because they're not doing it anymore. But I think that the, you know, when you get a complaint, um, I think it's been working pretty good for a garage sale. I, I, I don't think that there's been a lot of problems with it. It's the least of our worries.
Okay, it, like I said, I brought it, I brought it back because it seems like one of the issues that comes up with people before council and complaints and, and Tessa looks like she's got some comments and how many phone calls she probably received.
We, I'm picking up a lot of cold calls as a backup and we are getting a lot of complaints. And of course, the one lady who spoke in January or December about the, the amounts and the, I think one of the biggest nuisances is the signs, um, as that lady pointed out. Um, and even we explain it at the counter. Um, we, we have a, kind of a funky little tracking system that about every six months, I'll yank a bunch of garage sale permits out just to see if they're pulled with, with the same name, because there's so many rentals, that we don't check ID because, um, the house isn't owned by them. But people will come in and start yanking garage sales for one whole street. And those are the calls that we get. Uh, they're bringing in trucks. And they're doing, you know, multiple ones. So we were tracking it by the name of the person who pulled the permit and finding that that person was pulling eight permits, for instance, in a year, but for different addresses on the same street. So it's that kind of thing. And it's, it's silly time-consuming for a $5 permit. So, um, and code, for code, by doing, this is what I found, by, by doing a lot of this research with these cities where like Lancaster doesn't really care unless it becomes a nuisance and they get too many calls to code. Then they shut them down. Um, there's no permit issued. There's no tracking. They don't even know who, you know, they just know that at a certain point, if this person's having them every weekend and they get a call to code, then they'll do something about it. having them every weekend and they get a call to code, then they'll do something about it. Um, our code enforcement officers, as you know, are doing so much of the proactive stuff right now. It's just by choosing a weekend or choosing, and I know Rob's wife wouldn't like that, but by choosing a weekend a month or whatever, um, might not be convenient for the tenant if they're moving, which we, you know, oh gosh, it's not the weekend before I'm moving, I, I don't wanna do it that weekend. That could be a problem, but at least it would make code's job a lot easier if they knew that it was a garage sale weekend. Doesn't matter, they don't have to cite anybody. All they have to do is pick up signs. If it's a non-garage sale weekend, they can cite them as they run across them on a Friday or a Saturday.
However, I, I'm, and I, you're the one taking these calls and by the way, I'm really glad to hear that you are getting more complaint calls because that's really what it's gonna take. It's gonna take neighbors to complain. We could put on paper, you only get four times. We can hand people who happen to be the few good ones that come and get a permit. Here's a flyer, don't be a bad garage sale person. Okay, that's fine, but it's all the other people that are just doing it. So as long as in our code, it's four times a year, no more than three consecutive days. Five dollars, come and fill out a form at City Hall, I'm not sure that's gonna do a whole lot. Um, and most importantly, on the ordinance about the site. So when Tess is getting more phone calls, now, that means neighbors are complaining because that's the only way. We can't go police at all, but if a neighbor complains, then you know there's a garage sale problem. Now you can be active and go get that. If no one ever complains that there's a garage sale problem, then you gotta assume there's not a garage sale problem. Now, I would if my neighbor did, was doing it every single day and then at least we have it in the code. And if we had a garage sale only on the first Saturday of each month, well, what about the second, third and fourth Saturdays where all the bad guys are gonna do it anyways and those signs are gonna go out? They don't care, they don't even wanna get a permit. I think, I think it's all gotta be neighborhood police. If no one calls, there's not a problem. If someone calls, there's a problem. We have code to go.
Well, I think, like Tess and Paul were saying was, if you set them for set weekends though, that makes it clearly obvious that on any other weekend that they're not allowed for code to pick up on that.
The neighbor still has to call to tell code.
No, not necessarily, cause code officers do work on it. We do have set officers who shift work is, does include a Friday, Saturday shift. So that, those are the two most popular days for garage sales anyway. Very, very few want them on a Sunday. We, we do less permits for Sunday. We, we add it to the permit sometimes just because they can get three, but all, they always generally come in and it's only this Friday, Saturday because of Sunday being their day.
Is this something else we maybe used in conjunction with, you know, something in the newspaper or throwing that on why?
That's what we, we were working on, a, an application where people sign up for their yard sale and we put it on a website, on the website and, uh, on our G, through our GIS program and somebody's eventually able to click on yard sales and they can see every yard sale that we have a permit for on, on the weekend or whatever and they'll know where they're at and they'll know where they're, that they're legal or whatever, too. Then that might cut down on the need for people to use signage if there's other ways for them, right, to see that there's yard sale, there are yard sales out there, so.
I guess more so on the, if we did make any change or how do we inform the public of the changes and what they have available to them?
Gotcha. Oh, I see what you're saying.
But they could go out with utility bills.
That's what we did. We did that one time already with, with the utility bills and our website where we made a notice to remind everybody who gets a water bill in the city of Victorville that, don't forget, you gotta get a yard sale if you wanna have a garage sale.
Perfect, okay.
Yeah, cause I would want, you know, anything that we would do, definitely would wanna, you know, inform the public on, just so they're aware of it and, you know.
We need to do a new home packet again. I know, um, I think we had that many years ago and haven't had one since, but for new home buyers that, uh, tract developers have a handout for them going over some of the regulations in the city.
Hey, tract developers?
Yeah.
How many have you handed out?
No, I mean, we need to do that, that's what I'm saying. Before the boon comes.
I think, um, the, uh, if the biggest problem is, is the, the garage sale signs that go up on all the poles and the corners and then on Monday morning, it's all left junk. I think that's the biggest problem because, uh, once again, the guy that, the guy that has the garage sale every single weekend, the neighbor's gonna call or the neighbor's not gonna call.
Are you hearing more of consecutive garage sales or signage issues?
For code, for, the calls I get for code are consecutive garage sales. The people will come in, they'll get their permit four times a year, but they're, they're having them multiple times, so they're, they're getting a permit, but then they're not getting a permit. They're getting a permit, they're not. And, and the other, the other largest concern is that they're trucking in new things to sell.
Right, which is, yeah, that's.
Right. Making it a business and a garage sale's not supposed to be a business, so.
Agreed.
All right. Well, I would like to do, uh, presentation reports by the commission members. An opportunity is provided for planning commissioners to present items of interest at this time.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first of all, I made a note to myself regarding some of the things in which I witnessed that were achieved tonight. I saw that the commission created, uh, an environment for mediation between, uh, two parties, um, regarding their particular issue. I, um, I witnessed the fact that there were a number of, uh, solutions that were rendered and a number of decisions on behalf of the citizens for the city of Victorville that were in their favor. And I think this was a, um, an opportunity, once again, to make great gains on behalf of the city of Victorville.
Yes, Commissioner Wilson, you're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Oh, a little bit longer than.
I had a goal to have the longest. My tenure so far.
Yeah, you're doing okay job, that's it.
I have nothing that closes me until our, uh, what do we got, April eighth, I believe? Five pin, thank you. Thank you all. I appreciate that, yes. Got it, and I got yellow folders and pins and all kinds of goodies and forms and compliance and.